Rise for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands libation, undercut, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulina Frye.
Here.
John Cream.
Here.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
Tom Bratton.
Here.
In the event of emergency, decisions are advised that they may exit this room from the one-sided door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to move in your automobile so as to stand close to that property until the emergency begins.
Your meeting along with Mr. Scheich, so have at it.
So we're going to go through the primary drivers as they sit right now in our budget presentation. Just one update that is not in here. The governor made an announcement last night that they're looking at returning some of the foundation aid. What that'll look like, we don't know. The number we have now is still that $480,000 cut, which you'll see in this presentation. But it was, you know, it was promising news that one of her financial people came out and said that she's looking at restoring some or all of that aid. You know, we do have to thank our local legislators because all of them have vocally reached out to the governor and expressed the fact that they think the hold harmless should be restored at least for this year and looked at over the future if not restored for good. So thank you to all of them. And, you know, as we go through, you know, hopefully the next three or four weeks because the budget for the state is due April 1, hopefully we'll get some good news on that. So, Mr. Scheich, I'm going to pass it off to you now, and I'm going to come over, actually, I'm just going to come over to that side because I'll share when, at those different points.
When the state comes, when they make their decision to do that, will it be sooner rather than later, or will it be on March 30?
So it's supposed to be by April 1. That's the due date for the state budget. The last handful of years the state budget has been on time.
Yeah.
I would say for the decade before that it was not.
No.
There were times where it actually came in on the September of next year. So you're really flying blind. And then what would happen is, we would have to go with that $480,000 cut. If we don't have a budget by the time we have to approve ours, we have to go with the last numbers we were given, which is the $480,000 cut in foundation aid. And then, when they finally do their budget and they restore it, we would have contingencies as to where that goes. So, for instance, we typically use funding from some of our reserves. You know, we may use more funding from some of our reserves. When they give us some of that money back, it goes back into the reserve.
Okay.
You know, so what we would have to do is plan for it both ways.
We're going to assume the cuts are going to take place.
You have to, you have to go based on the last budget you were given.
Okay.
Ideally, April 1, they'll have a budget in place and we'll know where our actual number is. Then we can come with a balanced budget mid-April, vote on it, and then our community can vote on it a month later. And that's the ideal situation, and that's the way it's supposed to work. It's not uncommon for the state to not have their budget in place by April 1, and there have been many years where it was in place after the budget vote. If it's after the budget vote, we have to go at the last number proposed, whatever that may be, whether it's the 480, whether they've cut that down at that point. That's what we would have to plan for, because if you don't plan for that and it stays in place, then you're short, then you voted on a number that doesn't fulfill what your outlay has to fulfill for the next school year.
Right.
And that's not good practice. So I'm going to hand it off to you, Chuck, and I'm going to slide over here.
Great, thank you.
Okay?
Excuse me.
Okay, good evening, good evening, everybody. Yes, this is the draft of the 2024-25 budget. So some of the highlights, I know it was discussed, I think, at the last meeting, but the, what we do, we start meeting with the department heads, but there's basically a combination how I build the budget. There's two theories. One is I build based on the roll-forward method and then a zero-based method. So the roll-forward is kind of, you basically look at what the budget is in '23, '24, and you move it forward. That's how we do a lot of supplies, some contractual, maybe even equipment, where the department heads have their choice in total of their budget, and they don't need to give us a list of other supplies, the pencils, the paper clips that they need to buy with it. And it's typically lower dollar amounts. So that's, again, I would consider that a roll-forward. We also say that, then you got the zero-based budget, which means really you start from fresh each year. So that's a couple of larger items. Debt service is a good example, even though a lot of the debt service might be the same numbers year to year or close to it. We have debt schedules, so I build up the principal payments. I look at the interest for the TAN that we pay. So I base it on what I think we will spend in those areas. Salary, same thing. I pick, I go through each name that we have in the system, and I put the salary based on the contractual obligations that we have. So then, again, it is, you know, 500 or so lines in the budget. It is a combination of those two. As Dr. Morrow mentioned, the $486,000 foundation aid cut is the, it's one of the, probably the two big keys for this upcoming budget. And as mentioned right now, just to be, I might say it a couple of times, our revenue budget and our expense budget is not balanced at this point. It's kind of like the first go-through we went through. Our expenses right now are higher. We do think there's, we have a plan in place to kind of meet those things. Like Dr. Morrow was saying, to me, I do think the foundation aid at least will have a majority back, because the cut is based on a system that's not in place. Typically, right now, the foundation aid is hold harmless, where you typically get the same amount roughly from the year before. That cut really gets rid of that, so it's still in place. So as Dr. Morrow said, I think we're going to get a lot more information soon. We were kind of waiting to see if it would happen earlier, but again, we're, obviously we're watching that closely. This budget for the expense, we do have the programs and staffing is currently to remain intact. Right now, the draft expense budget to budget is a 4.46% increase, which we'll go through in detail. Again, one of the big drivers, health insurance, 15.5%, which is roughly a $700,000 increase for health insurance. Couple of other large dollar amounts, but look at the rates is the teachers' retirement system. We pay based on salaries. It's increasing from 9.7% to 10%. And same thing this year, the employees' retirement system is estimated to increase 13% to 15%. One of the things we look at this year is the budget, the increase in materials and goods, which is the, based on the Consumer Price Index. You know, we've seen certain items, I know the example is wood in the tech shop, that's probably has, seems like at least doubled the last couple of years. So we have to kind of work our budget to try and be able to increase it, but yet we're limited based on the revenue side, which, again, I'll discuss further. One of the things that, we have a few slides, I would like to, because what's important to see is how we are financially, how our fund balance is, to be able to decide, because the budget is a year-to-year budget in one year, but we also like to do everything because we want to do, look at the long-term picture. So the key is to kind of give you some oversight, some background with how we ended last year, which is June of 2023, on the financials. So our unassigned fund balance, that part of money is $1.2 million, which is roughly the same as the year before. That number is capped based on 4% of the following budget. Appropriated fund balance, it's a little tricky to explain, but that's basically the money that we give back to the taxpayers each year. That's the money you typically do want to build into your expense budget to cover any unknown unforeseen items that come up. And we roughly, we're going to keep it right now, it's roughly still the $350,000, which is, again, in years past, it was almost up to $1 million, and it definitely seems hard because, again, you have to build that into your budget each year and year. But that's, to me, again, where we, it is flexibility in that number, but like I said, right now, we're looking at $350,000. And the fund balance, having a good, healthy balance sheet helps our rating, keeps our interest, loan interest down. And it's just a reminder, our bond payment, which we only have the one, is anticipated to, to be over in June of 2031. Just the budget to budget, like I said, in the past, we've always, seems like we're hovering around the 2%. This year, again, obviously you can see the, I would call it a spike with the health insurance, and again, with the other costs, the Consumer Price Index, the price of wood. Salaries are moved forward based on contractual, but again, we do anticipate there is room that we can work on that to get that number down.
In essence, what Chuck is saying is that 4-point-something percent is going to come down closer to 3. You know, we, there are certain pieces of the budget that evolve as you go. So, for instance, every retirement saves us $40,000 or $50,000, because when you hire a new teacher in that place, you know, when all is said and done, it's about a $40,000 or $50,000 difference. Our retirements don't, we don't have to be notified about our retirements till April 1. So we don't put those in this first run of the budget, because we want to wait till we get them in. We've had some, and we know that we're going to have at least a couple, possibly three, possibly four. You know, that would be a $200,000 savings. So that $930-something thousand number would come down to $200,000. We had a retirement after our budget was full last year. Some of that will go. And, you know, some of the reductions have been made already, because Chuck works, he zeroes out some of the lines. So, for instance, the four or five, six-period stipends that were, that we didn't utilize in this building last year, because, again, our enrollment is down. You know, that's how you see the enrollment decrease on the secondary level, different than on the elementary level where it's a live person, you know. Those were in last year's budget. They're not in next year's budget, because Chuck would zero out that line, and he would say, this is what we used, and that's where we would start. Now, if we use less of them, then we'd come down again, you know. So when you looked at those expenditures he was putting out, those increases, they greatly exceeded the $500,000 or so, $400-something thousand that we're at now. You know, if you look at the 480 and the 930 total, you know, there was another million in expense increases, but those have already been reduced because of the reductions that were made, and also additions in different days that we may have had. So that number right there, that 4-point-something percent number, in our next couple iterations of the budget, as we, you know, trim things and, you know, put in these subtraction by addition when it comes to retirements and things like that, that number will come down to around the 3 range.
Okay, so this is our reserves. As you can see, the top two reserves, the capital and repair, you can see that those typically never have a revenue source in the budget, which is noted, which is noted on the right-hand column. But those are, when good on, on days with the budgets, we put money into those repairs. We used the capital reserve recently for the boilers. Again, it's a great thing. It was no cost to the taxpayers, and we use that reserve for what it's used for. With the older buildings, repair reserve, we typically use that a lot. It saves Mr. Drogon's budget for help, for maintenance, where he basically keep his repair line, he does fund it, but he keeps that line steady. So he can manage his budget a little better by having this repair reserve, which we have the hearings for, and we can address items, because, again, you can't really plan for a repair. You don't know when it's going to happen. The next two, retirement, we have the TRS, which is a fairly, it's a couple of years old now, is $971,000, ERS is $900,000. All these reserves, we fund and we use as the control in New York State has the guidelines to use. So we follow all the protocols. There's a couple that might have a cap on how much you can put in, like the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. We're allowed to put over 2.4 million in it, based on our compensated absences, but we're, we're under that. The TRS has a reserve at the cap of roughly 10% of salaries. Again, we're, we are nowhere near that. So like I said, the key, and with the revenue source, that just means we, we use, we set up these reserves, and then we use it to lower, so we don't tax the taxpayers with that amount, because, and it helps to fight any kind of fluctuations with those expense lines. And again, there, there's restrictions on what you can spend, so every worker's comp, obviously, only can be used for workers' comp, unemployment, and so on. So we follow the guidelines very closely, and basically that total amount, the $10 million, again, helps us with our rating, the Moody's rating, helps to keep our, you know, loan interest low. This pretty big drop, again, is because we utilize the capital reserve for the boilers.
That's a perfect example. When you look at, our reserves in '22 were $12,500,000. Now they're only 10.6, because $2 million went to new boilers. But that's $2 million that this community didn't have to pass a bond for. It's $2 million that you didn't have to increase the budget for. It's $2 million of work that was done because we saved up to do it. And it's work that has to be done, because two of our four boilers aren't working right now. And, and we, you know, we barely got through the year with them, because they're old, you know, and they're very, very difficult to repair. So this is exactly what reserve monies are supposed to be used for. They're supposed to give back a certain amount into your budget every year when you have increases in these different areas, and then you're supposed to lump some big pieces out of them, so you don't have to add them into your budget or ask your community to bond them all the time, and then pay for them for the next 15 years with interest. So it's a perfect use of the reserves that have been being built up here for many years. It looks like, hey, we're $2 million down. We're not. We're $2 million that was saved, put for what it was saved for, rather than having to, than having to come up with it or bond it and pay it over 15 years. It's the, it's a very smart way to, to put monies away and then utilize them for, you know, health and safety needs that absolutely have to be done.
Just to chart, so the, one of the factors, and we're going to get into a slide on the how we calculate the tax levy limit, what we can collect. And one of those issues is the tax-based growth factor. So that's something we don't have control over. It's basically, my understanding is like the brick and mortar changes in the district properties. This year, for '24, '25, you can see all the way to the right, it's roughly by 1.05. It's pretty high compared to the history of it. So it's a good sign, and like I said, it's, can't really tell you what exactly drove it. We get that number from, right from this, from the state. Consumer Price Index, CPI, basically can be anywhere between 0% and 2%. It's capped. That's part of the formula. You can see all the way to the right, '24, '25, we are allowed to go up to the 2%, because I believe the number that they looked at for the comparable range was, I think, 4.4% or something like that with the, what the Consumer Price Index was. And of course, we can't raise the tax levy that amount. We're limited to that 2%. So I'm not going to go line by line, but this is the calculation for the tax levy. Not the budget, but part of the budget, which, again, which most of our revenue comes from the tax levy. Again, we're not very, we're not, maybe luckily, heavily reliant on state aid. But you can see the top, our levy for this year is the $29,428. And jumping down to the bottom, the proposed, well, not the proposed, the amount that we're capped at to go for next year with the 50% vote is the $30,283,000. So that's a 2.91% increase, or the $855,000. And jumping around, but that number is mainly comprised of two numbers. One of it is the Consumer Price Index, the 2%, which we just talked about. So that allows us to go up $583,000, which is kind of in the middle of the screen. And that tax-based growth factor, the 1.05, is the $300,000. So that's the bulk of why we can have our tax levy go up that high. The other number, just so you know, one is like the capital cost, so that's mainly our bond issue. So that's voter-approved, and that's not something that we don't need, technically really need to vote on each year, because that's been already approved way back when, when the, that capital project was approved. So that's just, the $739,000 comes off, we add the new $708,000, and it's roughly the same, there's some minor changes, but the gist of it is that it's, it's kind of an in-and-out. What I do want to talk about a little bit is the pilot receivable, right? So payment in lieu of taxes is a number that, I believe this property is the LIPA properties. And unfortunately, it's a little different than what it normally is. There's no contract. I don't know what the term is and the amount. I get an email from the town and says, okay, here's your $183,000. And what's interesting is the money we get, like, say, this year, it's for the following year. So that, that number for the $183,000, we received it this year, I put it in what's called a unearned account, so I don't bring it into revenue, and next year I bring it into revenue. And the prior number, the $174,000, comes off. So when that number doesn't fluctuate too much, there's really no change in the tax levy. But a couple of years ago, when the pilot jumped on, that's when, I don't know, probably had taxpayers that know about it, but there is a decent drop in what the normal tax levy would have been. What's scary is that when that number drops off, that basically means we have to collect $180,000.
You have a hole. You have to make up for that hole. People, is that hard for people to understand and grasp?
Exactly. What we're trying to do is, because the fact that it's normally in the current year, the fact that we have a year, we'll try and work out certain things to make sure, because, right, with the tax levy and budgets, we want, we want it to be smooth. We don't want any spikes. That's why it helps to have a reserves. And again, with this tax levy, the, those, it's kind of a, the system's flawed, and then, again, there's no really way to kind of help districts, because, again, when it comes off, some districts with a large pilot program, you know, you can have a significant increase through no fault of the district. It's not something we can control.
Mr. Scheich, can we go back for one second?
Yeah.
About the CPI, because I think it's important for people to understand.
Go back to CPI.
CPI could be 6%, but the most we can go up is 2%.
We're capped at 2%.
And I think that we can't emphasize that enough, that, because a normal person is saying, if CPI is what it is, why aren't you taking that into account? And I, again, I just want to emphasize that our hands are tied. So we're not picking that number. That number is chosen for us.
That number is chosen for us because of the tax cap.
Right, right. Which goes back about eight, 10 years.
So the entire tax cap formula is centered around 2%. That doesn't mean that that's what our, like, our max levy, you know, anything 2.91 or 2% is below the cap for this year, because there are exclusions that count in, and that's why it's a little higher than 2. But in reality, all of your ed financing formulas are based around 2%, yet we have increases of 15%, 17%, 6%, 8% in everything that we have to pay for. And these are fixed cost increases. There's no 34% on busing last year, 34% transportation increase. Now, Sunrise was good enough to spread that over two years for us, so that we could manage doing it. So we're doing 17 last year and 17 this year, but we had a 34% transportation increase last year, and we have a 2% tax cap. So try to figure out how to fit everything in there is difficult without losing stuff, and it's going to get worse in the next few years. That $480,000 that I think we'll get most of it back will be taken over the next five years. I have no doubt about it. That's the reason it was, the hold harmless was taken this year, was so that when they give it back, we're all happy, and then they're going to say, but you got to figure out a plan to lose it, because they don't have it.
You could only hope that they would do it in lesser amounts over for, say, here, in the next five years, you're going to lose that 480, but it's going to be so much over each year.
I think that was part of the grand plan.
Instead of a big hit like that.
Part of the master plan was, take it all at once, and then people will be happy if you take it over five years.
And then they look like heroes up there.
Yes. But we're going to lose that. We're going to lose a million and a half in grant funding.
And we have to be ready for that.
In September. And we're ready for it, because we've been planning for it. But the reality is that the ebbs and flows of the financial world of education, they've been here as long as I've been in it. You have a handful of good years, and then you have some really lean years. The really lean years are coming for us. They're coming for all of us, not Southall. They're coming for New York State. The nice part is that we're extremely healthy financially right now, so I believe that we can live through the lean years without losing anything that we offer our kids. We just have to be smart about it. You know, we have to be intelligent in what we do, and we have to be intelligent in, in how we utilize our monies, because the $480,000 cut that they proposed this year is just the beginning. You know, that's just the very start of it. And I, I wish I were wrong, but this is the way it's, it's been, it's always been, you know, and it's going to continue to be this way. So we, you know, we've kept an eye out for it, we've planned for it, and I think that we can offer everything. I don't think we're going to lose things. You know, there'll be some right sizing, because we're smaller. And over the next four years, our high school's going to drop another 80 kids, so we're going to be smaller. So we'll have to right-size some things, like we did last year. But we won't lose. You know, I don't think we'll lose anything. I think that we, you know, and this started well before I ever got here. I think that you set up really good funds and started planning and saving in them, so that we will not lose anything when this time comes. But rest assured, this time is coming.
Do you have projections, do you mind making those, on what the enclaves, whether it's going to be pilots or property taxes, what, maybe the hotel they're building in town, $42 million or something?
Right, exactly. I know, I, I can picture, I think I have some that, I guess, I don't know if it's a draft at this point, but I think when that takes place, because I know it's, I think, that one, there's going to be a contract to 10 years. I don't know the numbers offhand. I can get that information to you.
I'm just curious, I mean. I believe it's going to be a pilot, a 10-year pilot. What it'll be, we don't know, but I believe it'll be a 10-year pilot. It's, it's definitely the literature that we got said, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't. That it said what?
It said that it was going to be a 10-year pilot?
I thought it was a 10-year, off the top of my head, yes.
Yeah.
Again, that's the way it should be, the pilot, there should be an agreement, something with the numbers.
That's a lot more manageable for us, because we know that for 10 years, we're going to get this every year.
And it's also, it's, it's not an apartment building, getting a pilot.
Yeah.
You know, we're getting no, no students out of it.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, exactly. And again, that should be when the agreement's set, it typically should affect the following year, so we have time, and we'll talk about it at the budget time, like now, this is what the number will be. But yeah, I'll get you that information.
I'm just, I was just. Yeah, they sent us, they sent us a big packet, so.
Okay. Let me recap, again, we talked about it, but state aid, so the state overall, they had increased $824,243, however, again, our numbers decreased in total with all the other state aid amounts, and BOSI's decreased $403,000, or 20%. Again, it's worth repeating, the foundation aid, you can see decreased 35% of the $486,000. But we're, again, keeping an eye on it, and hopefully that will change. And as Dr. Morrow again mentioned, the other funding sources, which does help for our spending and trying to get the kids up to speed, so to speak, some of those are running out to CARISSA, the bottom number, the $524,000, that's done, and we're in the final couple of months for the American Rescue Plan.
And I know this is a facetious question, and perhaps I mean it to be. And I, we asked at the time when we were granted this money, they can't come and look for this, these funds back, can they?
What they can do is, they can make it incredibly laborious and, and difficult for us to get the funds, which they do, right?
Get the actual money after we spend it.
Yeah, so like, right now, we're in the process of a desk, they don't call it a desk audit, they're calling it a desk review. So we have to put together all this data on how we used it, where we used it, all the bills, all. Now, Chuck started putting that together prior to me even getting here, because some of this funding came in, in those three months.
Right, it was the biggest, yeah.
Why we started working here. And we've been putting a lot of it together since, but there's, you know, time sheets for the summer, and, and they're going to make us jump through all these hoops to get it. It's their process in the state, you know. They would prefer to keep this big lump sum earning interest somewhere and then hand it out very slowly to us. So they can't not give it to us, but they will make us work to get it.
And they can't come back next year or the following year and say, hey, you know that 1.17 you got? Well, we want it back now.
Yeah, no, I've never heard of that happening.
Right.
This has never happened. This is just such a new, novel concept.
So I've never heard of that happening. I hate to say, I hate to say never when New York State.
I know.
This is federal money, most of it?
Yeah, American Rescue's federal.
Right.
Yeah.
But this, oh, so it's, this one's a state one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
CARISSA, the state.
I don't trust it.
So I don't believe that that's a possibility. There's a first time for everything.
Right, so those funds are part of the single audit, which we're waiting for the twenty-two, twenty-three, one to be completed soon. That's where they look at our federal grants to see that, you know, do they think the auditors, Cullen, Didanowski, they were spending it correctly? There is definitely potential, another audit by the state, who they get this through the federal government. So this could be a potential double audit, and that's what these desk, you know, reviews are. So there's a bunch of people looking at how we're spending it and how we're reporting it. And it's a great thing. It's what's called, it's supplement versus supplant. Again, we typically, any new programs, we do the summer enrichment through this grant. So again, we just have all the backup for it. So I think we're ready for it, we'll see. Okay, so I have two slides on revenues, just to, not to go through each line, but, and then this is kind of, to me, helpful. The top line is our tax levy. As I mentioned, that we're allowed to go up two point nine one percent, which is eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. Jumping to state aid, you can see a drop of four hundred thousand. You can see, that has to be made up somehow. So the state can say, well, you can only raise taxes two percent, but we're allowed to cut state aid by thirty percent. So it has to be made up somewhere. Typically, unless you're cutting programs, you're, again, increasing tax levy, which means you're piercing the cap. You can see, just, this lot of, its formula just doesn't work when you're limited on each line. Again, I'm not going to go through each line. Most of the shared services, we have the, what is that? We have an aid that we have that we're getting reimbursed from another school district, and so on, so that's what that shared service, I think there's two people in that line. And roughly, these lines, we're keeping the same. The use of reserves, again, slight change as of now. Proposed, again, these numbers are definitely subject to change. Miscellaneous interest is an interesting item. Our interest this year has jumped dramatically with the interest rates going up. I do have a slight, it is an increase in the interest rate, but it didn't increase it as much as we're receiving right now. I do anticipate, not long ago, the thought was the federal, the Fed would lower the tax rates very soon. Right now, it seems like the plan is they're holding off. Seems like the economy's doing well and that. So they do anticipate still that there will be an interest rate drop towards the end of the year. But like I said, it's, so the interest revenue line budget is just an interest line, but that's the bulk of what's changed, that I did increase the interest for next year, but not, again, exactly what I'm receiving right now.
Does this tuition for this incoming year include the increase in what New Suffolk will bring now?
That has not been adjusted. That number.
That'll be in the next.
It's not going to be that much, okay.
No, but it'll, you know.
Increase it a little.
Like, we're going to really look finitely at everything that will be slightly different. And we haven't been as close in the past, so we haven't.
For reasons because.
As precise.
Yes, absolutely.
This year, you know, like, even that, you know, four hundred thousand dollar revenue decrease that you saw before, it's really, you know, we were cut more than that, but then we had some of BOSI's aids and things like that increased. And many of those, as much as they show up as increases, they're only increases because we're spending more money with them, so the reimbursement increases. It's not really a savings. It's that we're, you know, we came out of one line and went into another line, because now we put it through a BOSI service instead of straight through a company service. So it looks like, you know, it looks like we're getting more money back. But the fact is, our cut was four hundred and eighty thousand. That's a good chunk to make up when you add in the other millions of dollars of increases that we had to make up for in the first place.
Another thing to point out, the line for the use of reserves, you can see we're using four hundred and ninety-five thousand as of now. Again, you could tell that because we're using the reserves, that's less money we have to, we have to raise for taxes. In total, the bottom line, our projected, right now, the draft, the revenue budget is going up only one point six five percent. And like I said, that's typically how, now, you know, when you meet the expense budget, you can see, it's just almost, it's, it'll be very difficult. So I have a one slide for the expenditures. And like I said, just to repeat at the bottom, there, right now, is a current difference of nine hundred and thirty thousand. Just go through some of the budget drivers. So salaries, the two point four, so that's basically, again, the same employees that we have now, just basically rolling forward. And that's based on contractual obligations, whether it's the SFA or the CSEA, so that, with that two point four eight number is. The benefits, the nine percent increase over eight hundred thousand, again, is the TRS, ERS, and of course, mainly the health insurance increase of the fifteen point five percent.
Which is lower than Niship, by the way, you know. The East End one is lower than the Niship one. If you were Niship, you'd be looking at closer to seventeen or nineteen?
You may be able to talk about it. It's, Niship is very interesting. I did try and look at the numbers. They're typically a calendar year increase in January.
It's very hard, because they go January through December, and we go June through July.
But they did last year.
It was fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, it's hard to project.
I have friends in other districts that told me they were looking at building seventeen into their budget.
Yep, I think you're right.
Because that's what they thought, the two-year average.
No, they increased it, I think, thirteen percent in January of twenty-three. But then they dropped it in July, which is a mid-year.
They used fund balance money or something like that.
Which is, I think, unheard of, and I think they're at least projecting another ten, eleven percent in January, so. That is the great thing about the Eastern Health Plan, the fact that it's the same fiscal year as us, so we don't have to project or anticipate.
For planning purposes, yeah.
You know, what that number is. Transportation, as was mentioned, so it's only a six point three nine percent. So basically, I had to, I got rid of, we had two contingent runs in there. What happens sometimes when we have added district tuition, which we have monies for potential that we will fill, same thing with transportation. And it has, we've used a lot of times, whether we have to go to West Hampton Beach BOSI's, we have to go to Bellport, it's typically BOSI's programs. And a lot of times, different times, we need separate buses for that. So that's basically, you just had to cut out any kind of fat net line. As mentioned, there is a seventeen percent just for the contractual for Sunrise Bus. BOSI's cost is a number we're still looking at, but the, it's a large increase mainly in the, I'll say the, I'll call it the IT area.
You'll see a decrease later. If you went line by line, you would see a decrease, because we pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars less to one employee that we had last year.
Eliminated a position.
That line is included now. We pay, we contract for all those services out of BOSI's. That's the largest part of that hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase. Then there are other BOSI's expenditures that we put through BOSI's that we hadn't in the past, and that allows us to collect aid on them. You know, so there were a handful of things that we paid for and did, but we didn't put them through BOSI's, you know. So that's really what that biggest change in that line is, is now we contract all of our tech and data services through BOSI's. And that's where you see most of that change.
Right, exactly, those lines. Definitely relate to look at that other line. The big drop is mainly because of the reduction in that area, where we're spending now the money in BOSI's. Again, debt service, again, those, just right from our debt payments, the math that increased was basically our tax anticipation note interest. I bumped up a little bit now, it's starting. I've always kept that line roughly flat over the years, and we've always had very low interest rates, knowing that the interest rates will go up. And of course, now they are starting to go up. So now, again, potentially, now I have to make sure we're not going to be short in those lines. Added district tuition, you know, we'd be careful with that. You know, that can change very quickly, but we're keeping that budget line the same. And you can see, for equipment, operations, maintenance, as I mentioned before, again, those are typically, we're just rolling forward those numbers. Department heads feel like they're trying to work, they have to do more with less. But we're seeing basically minor increases in that, because we were trying to have them basically keep their budget roughly close to what they're spending this year. And again, in total, that's where you get into the four point four six percent, which happens, again, very quickly with just a couple of those large changes. You can see, it drastically will affect what the outcome is, with the budget for next year. And again, to repeat, we do have the budget difference, but we definitely have ideas where we've been, just haven't made those changes. We'll see what the state aid number comes up with. But we, I don't anticipate that we'll have an issue getting the numbers to where they should be. I keep this every year, it's to look at, but basically, it just tells you, as I mentioned, we follow these reserve, how to spend it, how to fund it, very closely. The auditors look at it, but if you want to receive, that's, it's basically the, a lot of times, it's too self-explanatory with the reserves of four, but they are different how that you can fund them and spend from them. And like I said, so that's just the kind of the detail. So next budget date, next week, we have the, a week from today is the, we'll have the admin presentations with their budgets. April tenth is another meeting, and we anticipate the board to have a budget in front of them to adopt on April seventeenth.
So ideally, we would love to have a state budget on April one. If not, a week into April, we can scurry around and really do what we have to do. But if we get to April seventeenth, and we still don't have a state budget, and we have not been given another iteration, because there are years where there's two or three iterations of a proposed budget that come out before they end up with a final budget, then we're looking at the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar decrease in our, in our planning. You know, now, again, we would plan for both, because it's not prudent not to. We would figure out how we can make up that difference, utilizing different fund balances and different reserves, and, you know, tightening up everywhere else we can without eliminating or cutting any of our programs. And then we can always return monies to those funds and look at adjusting our levy if the state comes through with the number prior to the vote or even after the vote.
Is the seventeenth?
I find it ironic that we have drop-dead dates that we have to stick to, but the state doesn't have to. Again, I apologize for my snarkyism this evening. But is April seventeenth our date that we have to have our budget adopted by?
Vote is May.
Twenty-first. That's why, that seems like a fairly big spread, it's like.
Oh, it's got to be a month.
It does have to, oh, okay. I thought it was closer than, okay.
No, no.
You have to, you have to go out, adopt a minimum of a month.
I know we back into it from the budget dates.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
So.
They give us a range for dates when you have to adopt it, and that's the meeting that's.
Okay, that's what I, it seemed farther, but.
After, before.
And we have to, we have to do that.
We have to adopt or not.
Right, right.
And if you don't adopt, then you can't go.
Again, the state's supposed to, by law, do it by April first as well, just saying.
The people that make us, the people that make the requirement for us to adopt, they don't necessarily have to have theirs in place. Now, I have to tell you, the last, the last handful of years.
It was better, definitely.
You know, the last handful of years, they've had it. They went a decade or so not having it, and there was even some early, when I was young, there were some years where they came up with a budget in September. And, you know, you're, much of our purchasing happens over the summer. So, you know, and our hiring all happens prior to that. And so you've spent a huge, or committed a huge amount of your money, and then they come across with a budget that you now have to figure out how to fit into. It's extremely difficult. It's not a wonderful process. I would, I will say that I do believe that, looking at all the numbers that we have right now, even worst-case scenario, I believe that we can provide every program we have now without cutting anything. You know, because of the planning that we've put in place and because of the financial position that we're in, I believe that we can provide everything. It'll, there's going to be a lot of work to try and move things around, and, you know. And we've started planning for this already. You know, even just with how we're using our grant money and what we expanded this year, where we've already started to plan to be short. Because anybody that didn't expect us to be short this year is not looking at the tea leaves. You know, it's there. They're clearly there. The comptroller came out and said it at a meeting I was at with him last year. He said he expects a shortfall next year, and the year after, or the year after. You know, he came out and said he expects that we're, and he's the primary financial person of the state. He expects that we're going to have some difficult financial time. So with all that being said, I believe all the programs and all of, everything that we offer our kids, we will be able to keep in place. You know, some of the, you know, plans for different things may be possibly not right now. But I think we'll be able to keep everything we have in place and offer all of the things that we offer to our kids right now, even with these shortfalls that we may run into, and even with these, you know, really monumental increases that I've not seen in a number of years. Do you have anything else for us? Does anybody have any other questions? Board?
Put together pretty nice.
I'm working on the line by lines, so I may have some next week.
I'm sure you will.
I'm going to try not to. And I promise I will email them ahead of time if there's anything that.
Keeps us on our toes, it's good.
That's my job, that's what I get paid to do.
Yes, it's good to have.
Chuck, what percentage of our funding is grant funded?
Four hundred and eighty.
Well, it's tricky, grants are a separate fund.
Yeah, but I, well, what's our total take in grants per year?
And then it's tricky, it's, we spent over a million dollars last year.
Let's count out. You're talking about our regular grants that we always get, not these specialized ones.
No, no, just on average.
Yeah, they're very minimal. I can get you the numbers, but they're, you know, I'd say maybe, our F fund, it's the F fund, right?
Yeah.
I'd say probably all combined, it's less than a hundred and fifty thousand, isn't it? You know.
No, because the single audit that we had for the twenty-two, twenty-three, I think, again, I'm pretty sure we spent over a million dollars in the year before. We typically don't need a single audit, the threshold is seven hundred and fifty thousand, so we're typically around five hundred thousand or so.
So that's our normal.
Absent Carissa and.
Yeah, because of those grants, we can't do the single, you know, we have to do the other audit. But prior to that, we're under half a million total, and that's everything. You know, that's all of the grants, you know, I mean, some of them are literally six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, some are eight thousand dollars. They're, you know, they're not, they're not large grants. They're not, now, the nice part about that is, you know, we, I had a grant in my prior district that was like one point six million. So when they cut your grant.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, it's the thing, if they're small, it's pocket money, or it's found money, so to speak.
It's not as devastating, just like this, we have a thirty-four percent cut in foundation aid. Thirty-four percent. Very similar to Three Villages cut. Theirs is eight point four million. Ours is four hundred and eighty thousand.
Perspective.
It is significantly harder to make up, even though it's all scaled correct the same way, it is significantly harder to make up eight point four million than it is to make up four hundred and eighty thousand, no matter what your size is. So the fact that we don't get a lot of aid, you know, in bad years, the fact that we don't get a lot of grant money, and the fact that we don't get a lot of state aid, when you have lean years, which we have coming, it is, it is significantly easier to keep all of the great things that you do for your kids in place.
Right.
When you get a lot of that stuff, when you have lean years, you will end up eliminating people and programs, because that's what your money goes to. You know, supplies, supplies are a very minimal piece of what our money goes to. Our money goes into people and programs. That's where probably seventy-five percent of our budget goes. You know, so that's what you lose when you have those big cuts.
And in the same vein, you can't, people will say, well, why don't you use more of your reserves? Well, if you use it all this year, you've got a hole next year.
Yes.
So it's not, it's just.
If you have a five-year, like, let's say we have five lean years.
And our plan has always been to keep it consistent.
Your plan has to be that you're using, you're using your reserves in a way that allows you to keep your people and your programs, but will also allow you to sustain your lean years. You know, I've been in places where we've used millions in reserves, millions, on a program in a year, which means now you have to have millions every year. You know, we've been very cognizant of the fact that we, this cut, this cut came early, you know, as much as we think it's going to change. And we changed up, you know, the way we looked at everything. So it's hopeful that we can put more money, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars can put more money, that $350,000 that we spent last year, we can probably up that this year with no impact on the rest of our reserves. You know, we can utilize that with monies, you know, that are not spent for this year. And, you know, that's why I think that we can get through this without impacting our reserves in a negative way, and without impacting our program or our people in a negative way. But again, we started planning for that months ago, because, you know, you could, you could see this coming.
Years ago, we.
The comptroller talked about it in June at a meeting. Like, when I told you, he said this at a public meeting, it was over the summer that I was at a meeting, that he said, he's, he said he expects that we're going to have financially difficult times in the next handful of years, starting now. So we've been kind of planning for that, and Chuck does a great job at all that. And so, like I said, I don't think it's going to impact our people or our programs in any way whatsoever, but it's going to be work. And it, you know, the last handful of years, we've, you know, we've had the luxury to do some different projects we wanted to do, and we had money from grants to do some of these different things that we wanted to do. And, you know, ideally, those things will serve us for many, many years. You know, the $350,000 ventilation system we put on will serve us for years to come. And I'm glad that we got to do it out of a grant, because that money is still in our repair reserve now, instead of us having spent it. So I think we'll be in good shape, and I think that we'll come through this fine. But it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a sustained few years of us having to plan in a way where we make sure we can provide, you know, an educational system in a way that's financially sustainable, and also at the level that we want to have for our kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the business department.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Scheid.
Nice.
I guess, even though it wasn't a real meeting, we need a motion to adjourn, since we're a quorum.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you next week.